Attendants to the Finance Subcommittee, appreciate that. We'll get the meeting started.
Council Chairman of the Finance Committee, Consular Brown.
President.
Consular Taylor.
Here.
And Consular De Jesus, she's the absent, but you have her call. I'll also make note of the fact that Consular Vizcaya is here, Consular Robinson is here.
And Consular Lopez.
Consular Lopez.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
The meeting is officially invited to attend the Subcommittee meeting, all members of the City Council, City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Housing and Community Director Alex Train, DPW Commissioner Lou Memelot, DPW Business and Grants Manager Kate Fox-Lent, all members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Again, we call this meeting, we have a lot of Subcommittee orders that were coming before the Finance Committee. Some of the Council members want to hear an update. I want to thank the City Manager for being here, the rest of the staff for being here this evening. We do have in our last packet, we had a description of the free cash and what we'll be doing here tonight. But again, I wanted to have you come in and if you can give us just a brief, we appreciate that. And if any of my fellow Councilors have some questions after the presentation, I'll let the members of the Finance Committee speak and then we'll open it up and we'll let our colleagues from the City Council speak. And if anyone from the public would like to say something, we'll give them an opportunity to speak. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Consular. So, at the end of February, we got our free cash certified by Department of Revenue. We really got a very healthy free cash number, higher than even I was anticipating, and almost $15 million in free cash. And so, there's always a fair amount of projects that I like to do, but it depends often on how much free cash is available. And with this free cash number, you know, I felt confident presenting to you some sort of one-time expenditures that I think will move the city forward. It's even all of these expenditures together only amount to a little over $2 million, so we're not, you know, making a huge bite out of this free cash number. But I think each of these requests are important in their own right, and so I'm advocating to move forward with all of them. What I would propose is to just walk through each one, give a brief explanation, pause, and take questions. I do have Alex Train from Housing and Community Development, Lou Memelot, and Kate Fox-Lent from DPW, who can add some more detail if I can't answer the question on some of the items that impact their two departments. So, if you don't mind, I'll just walk through each of these one by one.
Okay. If you want, Mr. Manager, a lot of them, particularly the first ones, first five are pretty self-explanatory. But if you want to just read the note capture of the first five, if any of the colleagues have a question, we can ask you directly. That way we'll do them five, 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 and pretty much.
Okay. I'll do that and give you a one-liner on each of them.
Great.
So, the Bunker Hill Scholarship Program, the request is for $147,750. This would pay for the fifth year of the program. It would take care of those people graduating from Chelsea High School this coming year. The senior transportation is to continue the ongoing senior transportation that we have. We have funding to get us through the end of December. This will carry us through the end of fiscal year '23. This is probably going to be, going forward from FY '24 on, something that's going to be in the operating budget of Elder Affairs. It will not be in '23 because I'm asking for a number that'll get us through the end of '23. The Downtown Initiative, you know, I've come to you before on Downtown Initiative requests. I haven't in about two years, but we had money left over to do what we needed to do last year. This is looking for an infusion of funds to do all the things that make a downtown vibrant. So, this includes money for public art, for actual events, for storefront improvement second round, for support for outdoor dining for some of our restaurants. So, that's in that request.
And again, that's $400,000.
$400,000.
So, we just get the numbers in. Thank you.
The Munis Upgrade for HRIS, this is to pay the cost of a consultant to come in and help us best utilize munis, mostly for human resources, tracking of leave, and some other things that will be very helpful for them in compliance reporting. And we need some money for the consultant. And the final one is banners. A set of banners run somewhere in the $20,000, $23,000 range. That includes all the artwork and everything. And we haven't ordered banners in a couple of years. They do start to fade. And in addition, people get sick of seeing the same ones. So, this would allow us to go through and purchase two different sets of banners for our city. So, those are the first five.
Okay.
And that's $50,000.
Correct. Previous one for the professional service and the consultant was for $60,000. And this year, again, for the street sign and updating, make it more beautification, is $50,000. Anyone have any questions on the first five items before us, prior to Committee members first? Okay, Mr. President?
I'll go right to the second one on the appropriation of the, for the Elder Affairs contract. Again, we've had private conversations expand. What are the services we're presently offering and what will continue from here on in? This is, and how long this program or this infusion will last us till?
So, this will get us, so, we, right now, we have a grant, a pretty good grant, and so we're providing a pretty robust transportation system right now for seniors. It's almost like an on-call thing. You call up, we deliver you sort of door-to-door. That's a very expensive proposition, and we're probably not going to be able to continue that level of service once that grant expires. This is to sort of get us transportation sort of at the level we previously had, which was typically, I think we did three days a week. We delivered people back and forth to like six of the house of the elderly complexes, and we took people to Market Basket on specific occasions. That's kind of the more typical level of service that I would be, that at some point we're going to get to when this grant money runs out. Right now, we're offering a higher level of service because we have a grant that's giving us some money to do that. But I don't, I'm not proposing that we continue that level of service on an annual basis because that would be significantly more than we've ever appropriated for this purpose. I think that the, I think that the members of the senior center are comfortable with the level of service we were providing pre-COVID. They were very happy with that level of service. And that's what this proposal is for, that level of service. Right now, and as long as we can afford it, we're going to continue to do this sort of enhanced level of service. That's a little bit better.
The enhanced level of service, are you expecting, confident that the MBTA's ride will be able to substitute that? Or is that a different sort of service that they're doing?
Yeah, that's a completely different set of service and not something that I know a whole lot about, to be honest with you.
Okay. Following up on that, did you have a breakdown of the downtown contract services on what will be spent on what item?
High level, yes. And it's in the back of the package, right after the last page of Dr. Abada's letter on the scholarship. It was presented to the Council as a package that had a bunch of attachments to it.
Okay.
And there was a high-level breakdown. So, I can just, so the total was $400,000. $75,000 was for public arts stuff. $150,000 was for events, special events, supporting some of the concert series, downtown festivals, Chelsea Day, which is an expensive, that's probably a $20,000 to $25,000 expense right there. Central American Independence Day, some of the stuff we assist the Paul and Air Theater with. So, that was a total of $150,000. The cultural, some cultural programs for $25,000. That included some walking tours and some historical sign documentation. And then, the Small Business Assistance piece, which was $150,000, which is really just two programs of $75,000 each. One for outdoor dining, and we gave, we did last year, we gave direct grants to people interested in outdoor dining. We just gave them money to purchase, you know, outdoor seating, et cetera. We would do this, we would propose to do the same again this year, and $75,000 would be another round of the storefront improvement program. And we probably could do about five storefronts with $75,000.
Are any of the events that you mentioned not applying, or are they also applying to the Cultural Council? Because there's funding from both the Encore Casino and grant money there. So, I wonder if there's, is it, you know, are they getting two sources?
I mean, some of them do. So, Paul and Air will definitely apply there, but they always have a gap. So, we try to help them fill it, even with the money they get from the, that $100,000 part. Other than that, we don't typically, the city doesn't typically go to that part. We leave that to outside entities. So, to run events that we sponsor, we have been relying in the past few years on this money for the Downtown Initiative. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to spend the whole $400,000 this coming year. The last time you gave me an infusion of funds, it lasted almost two years. We will use this money until it runs out. We'll clearly use all the outdoor dining and storefront improvement program, but I'm not sure we're going to use the full $150,000. But this is a free cash appropriation. It'll continue until it's exhausted. So, it may be that I come to you next year for some money, but it won't necessarily have to be 400, because we'll have some money left over. I don't know what we'll actually spend this year, but we're kind of running out of money at this point.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I got a question regarding the Small Business Assistant. Did you say it was two stores or two businesses?
We probably have, it's probably about $15,000 a storefront, unless Alex thinks differently. I thought we could do maybe five storefronts.
So, again, we're talking about the Small Business Assistant where we're talking about allocating $150,000?
Yes. So, that includes two specific programs. Program one is helping outdoor, helping restaurants with outdoor dining. That, we're going to allocate of this $150,000, $75,000 to that. The second part of that $150,000 is $75,000 for the storefront improvement program, another round of that. And I'm thinking with about $15,000 per store, we could do like five stores. But maybe Alex thinks we could do something.
Okay, Alex, before you speak, thank you, Mr. Manager. So, just want to get clarification. The storefront improvement, is that like the artwork that we saw on some of the stores and on the side of the businesses? Can you define what the two 75, the two parts are? Part A, $75,000, and part B? If you can give us a definition of what that's going to cover.
Absolutely. So, part A is going to encompass the storefront improvement program. So, that's direct funding and design assistance to small businesses to upgrade signage, exterior lighting, awnings, windows, and other facade improvements to beautify their storefronts and increase business visibility. The second pot of funds that we're.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That doesn't mean painting, does it?
It could mean painting.
Yeah.
If there are painted elements of the facade that, you know, require updating, let's say the paint's been shipping and it's tired-looking, painting would be an eligible expense. But it's not usually used for like murals or any type of public art. This is strictly for signage and building-related visibility improvements.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then, the second pot of funding for outdoor dining, we ran a very successful outdoor dining program last year. That is consisting of $5,000, up to $5,000 per business for outdoor dining setups, either on the sidewalk or with city approval, on-street parking space in front of the business. The funds can be used to purchase equipment like tables and chairs. I can defray costs of carpentry. Some businesses created, you know, standing counters as well as planters to beautify and delineate the seating area, as well as other improvements like temporary ADA ramps to provide accessibility. So, on average last year, you know, we saw grants around $4,000 to $5,000 per business. Everything's exorbitantly more expensive this year. So, we are expecting that there will be, you know, reasonably strong demand for the program heading into the summer months.
If I could just say this here, because it's been in the news for a few weeks, in Boston, a lot of storefronts and a lot of outdoor dining has created some hazardous, where it's been an impact on the DPW and the cleanup crew. Have, what kind of feedback are we getting there? Are people complaining about some of the issues that Boston residents are complaining about, rodents, trash, you know, because it's late night, people rushing to get out and already cleaning up their premises?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, our downtown businesses that participated in the program last year, you know, diligently maintained their spaces. There was very rarely occasions of trash or any unkempt areas, nor did the city really encounter any issues with maintenance or cleanliness. In Boston, one of the other key pieces of feedback we heard from businesses was about the complexity of the application process. A lot of businesses thought that the Boston application was too complex. So, we're working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to create a simplified application. The businesses can submit through the Chamber's office as well as through the city, both in person and online with our staff that'll be available to assist them with that application.
And is there a deadline for businesses to apply?
Not right now, there isn't. When we launch the program, we will be setting a deadline. It'll likely be four to six weeks after we launch the program. And if funds remain, once that deadline passes, we would keep it open.
Okay. Can you also make sure we get a copy to the, this Subcommittee?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Be happy to.
Any of my colleagues have, Consular Robinson?
Any of the businesses who we helped last year by getting furniture or whatever improvements, are they going to be eligible to reapply this year for some of the same things that they were, got last, last year?
So, that's a good question. So, right now, our aim is to make this funding available for businesses that did not apply and receive funding last year. Additionally, there are some businesses that applied last year that didn't use the funds. So, we will be monitoring businesses and recapturing funding as, as needed this year.
Any other Council members? Okay. Mr. Manager, you can do the next five if you like. If you think that's pretty, if you think that's a great direction, if you want to lead?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next one is electronic crosswalk signage for $50,000. These are those sort of push-button things that light up when someone wants to utilize a crosswalk. They've been very effective in our downtown and in some other high-traffic, high pedestrian traffic areas. They're pricey. They're about $23,000 apiece. I'd like to do a couple more. One place where we've gotten some resident demand for one is on Williams and Winessemit Crosswalk. So, that's a spot. I don't have an already identified spot for a second one, but this would allow us to pretty much get two of them. The Forbes Public Safety Improvement, so what, Williams and Winessemit, where the, that restaurant is, yes. Forbes Public Safety Improvements, the request is for $293,000. So, last year, you provided us money to do a comprehensive engineering review of the site. We are concerned about some of the structures there. And with a developer that's not moving forward, it's, you know, the city, the developer has the ultimate responsibility, but we have to be concerned with public safety. People do access that site, notwithstanding there are no trespassing signs there. We want to ensure that it's safe. Our consultant has identified some short-term improvements that we could make to ensure safety of people who make their way to that site. As I say in the letter, this is something that the city will recover these funds. We will put a lien on the property. And eventually, we will get all of our money back, but we will have to put the money upfront. And the cost of the work that we want to do this spring slash summer is $293,000. The Massport noise study, this is something that this Council has requested that we pursue. We had pursued this just before COVID. I had a proposal from the same company to do this comprehensive study. The purpose is to simply give the city ammunition as it meets with Massport to hopefully get better mitigation funds from them. We put a halt on this during COVID because the air traffic had substantially been reduced. It is starting to pick up. I went back to the same company, have a new price for the project. Again, I have to go out to bid for this work, but given our prior experience, there aren't many bidders. There really isn't anyone else interested in this work. The full-time ISD building inspector is the, this was a council order to put our part-time inspector onto full-time. His full-time, he is being proposed full-time in the FY '23 budget. This will allow me to move him to full-time as soon as the Council approves this allocation. And it's relatively short money because there's only a few months left in the fiscal year.
So, is that the $10,000?
That's $10,000.
Okay.
And I'm going to stop there because then there's five left.
Okay. Any questions, Council members? If you want to have any questions, pretty much scrape forward. Consular De Jesus?
Thank you. Just on that last reading for the inspector, can you explain that a little more for me so I can understand?
Yeah, so we have one, there's, there's four, I'm gonna, I need to see this. Let's say there's four inspectors, four full-time inspectors. I think there's five full-time inspectors. There's one part-time building inspector. And there's a need for, they're always, you know, under the gun. And so, there's been a recognized need that we need to make that half-time building inspector a full-time inspector. I had committed to doing that in the FY '23 budget. So, when you see your budget for FY '23, this position, which is currently part-time, will be in that budget as full-time. In November or so, the Council had put a council order in to move the person up to full-time immediately. And I said, as soon as I have money to do that, I'll propose it to the Council. And I had to wait for free cash to get certified. It got certified. So, with this appropriation of $10,000, I can immediately bring that person from part-time, which is 19 hours a week, to full-time, which is 37 and a half hours. Okay.
Mr. Manager, anybody else have a question before I go? Mr. Manager, regarding the noise study, I know we've been, you know, talking about that for some time and, you know, everyone wants to find out what we can do. Can you tell us what do we expect to get with the $140,000, $147,000 that you're asking for?
So, there's a breakdown of their cost that's attached to the letter. And basically, it comes, it's sort of these three chunks. So, the first is sort of a historical assessment of noise at Logan to alert us to what's noise has been like for Chelsea over time and how the current situation compares to that. Then, there's a actual analysis of real-time noise for one full month. They're going to study this, the situation of noise by tracking every plane that comes in and out of Logan for one month. And then, the third piece of it is they will continue that analysis for 12 months after that, after we, the idea is they'll do it for one month. We'll pause, we'll look at their analysis, we'll potentially tweak their model a little bit, ask them to look at different things. And then, once we have an agreement on what the full-year scope study should look like, they'll proceed for one full year analyzing noise from every single plane. And they model this. They basically have all of the details of every single type of plane that takes off from Logan. They, in real time, they know which plane is taking off, what the model is, and they will do an analysis of the noise for a full year. And they'll do that for a full year because that is how the FAA requires Massport to model noise. It's a full year's noise modeled, and then it's the average of the noise that determines what the impact on a community is. According to the FAA, I'm not saying that's right, that's correct. It's not really how people get impacted by noise, but that's how the FAA requires airports to do.
So, at the end of this study analysis, do, are we going to be able to go to Massport and say, this is what we've come back, this is what the study provided and showed? Will they be willing to help us, or are we still going to have to?
No. But we'll at least be able to say, hey, we did the analysis. Your numbers, as we knew, aren't right. Here's what our numbers show. And they'll say, well, you did it wrong. Your experts don't know what they're doing. We're the experts. That's where we'll be. But at least we'll have something, whereas right now, we have nothing.
Right. So, at the end of the day, we got the numbers, we got what we want, and they argue it. Where do we go from here?
It's just another, so this is the question for the Council.
That's why I wanted to.
Is this worth it to you?
Yeah, okay.
Is it worth it for the city to have a little more ammunition as it tries to advocate to Massport to do really what I would see as two things? One, increase the annual payment they make to the city for impact. They have been paying the city $600,000 for 20 years. It hasn't increased a penny despite inflation. So, one, argue that that's insufficient. Two, say, and by the way, we've been asking you to donate to a park on the waterfront, just like you've done for Res Boston. And we're not asking for $20 million for a park like you gave them. We want a few million for our waterfront park that you've put some money into, that we have land from the Commonwealth for. So, it'll be trying to convince them to do that with a little more evident, a little more ammunition. Now, is that worth $147,000? I'd say yes, but this is your call.
Okay, thank you. Consular, did that clear?
I just need to speak on this because I have a little history on this, particularly on the fighting the Massport sound issue. And I'm glad that the City Manager is coming to us at this point. We were ready to have this study done years ago. I apologize ahead of time. This is going to be a little bit of backstory so that my colleagues who weren't here at the time and are also new, and all those who don't know the background. This order actually was first approved to have a study done, originally introduced by Consular myself and then Consular Dan Cortell. We had asked for this because we were much aware of Massport's expansion and permitting that they were doing for Terminal E. And because Chelsea, the airport is in Boston, they only had to notify and mitigate its impact to Boston residents, even though it's an expansion of their international flights. Meanwhile, historical data had shown that Massport's increase of its flights from the original expansion in the 1990s did not go up 12% as they had predicted and had based their model on the sound mitigation program for Chelsea. No, instead, it went up 18% to 25%. So, we were getting many more planes than what we were told we were going to get when they did their original model on the original sound mitigation program in the city of Chelsea. When I attended Massport meetings on both the expansion and on the newest numbers that they were saying, and this is pre-COVID, they actually said, guess what? Our planes are quieter. And even though we have many more planes flying over the community, the impact or the mitigation zone has now contracted. And some of the very same homes that had previously qualified for sound mitigation in Chelsea were no longer. And it was infatimable to myself that, how can you tell me you have increased the number of flights by 25%? We are hearing it more and more, and yet you're telling me less homes in Chelsea qualify for this. It was just, it was, of course, I think gibberish. It was just, it was, of course, the, I think, gibberish. I have other words to say, but I will keep my, you know, keep my, uh, keep it clean here.
Well, I think that's one reason why the council feels that it's an investment that we have to take.
So.
Though it's a costly one, that, that's the direction we're going.
So the idea is that we get, and again, along with this idea that I'm looking to have them push or expand the mitigation area of the city of Chelsea to other parts where they currently do not think that it deserves. My idea was from the top of Bellingham Hill, and I lived there for years, you can hear those planes, and I know all the residents below me could hear the planes. They did not take into account topography or such. And so they say that area did not qualify. I beg to differ as someone who experienced it myself. And I want those residents, although I don't want to live on that hill anymore, I still want those residents to get the soundproofing that they deserve because they should deserve, they need to sleep. And there are studies now that have come out about the environmental and health impacts of this noise that comes out. But historically, what happened is just as we were ready to finally, because it took, and I credit the city manager, I want to, you know, give him credit for this. Um, it took us a while to find a company that actually did this work. Because guess what? A lot of the companies in the area that do this work, and we went to MIT Sound Study and all around, they can't do the work, they can't get hired because Massport has hired them all. So all the experts in the area are hired by Massport. So you have to go far all over the country to try to find someone because because they already have a contract with Massport, it'd be a conflict to do the report that we're requiring. So that's why it took us so long to get this contract. And I applaud the city manager for his diligence in finally finding a company that could do the work that we need to try to see if we can actually get some real mitigation from Massport, have an argument. And he's not as litigious as I am, but I would say, you know, arm the torpedoes, we have a report. You know, if you don't want to go out and, and, and give this community the mitigation that I think we properly deserve, yeah, let's go to a lawsuit, but that's another bridge another time. But at least we'll have ammunition to say, you know, bubkis, and we'll let an independent eyes see both reports. But I, you know, strongly will be in support of this. There's a lot of history, and yes, we had to wait. Because when COVID came, we all know that the number of flights dropped, and there was no sense of doing a sound study when there was no air traffic. But it has already rebounded. The airport is back to normal business, and I'm looking forward to getting this done and getting this sound mitigation, actually, or this sound study actually done. So we have, again, real data for ourselves because I don't trust Massport's studies as much as I would trust our own.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other question? Mr. Taylor, Councilor?
How long will this study take?
So what they're proposing is that once we start the modeling, they would do one full month, stop, have us analyze what they've done, tweak this, the model a little bit based on feedback with the city. And then once we're on the same page as to what the model will look like, then they will start a one-year, full-blown analysis, tracking every single plane coming in and out of Logan that flies over Chelsea. And so it's really a thirteen-month study. It probably wouldn't start until September because they will first do the first phase, which is this historical review of noise at Massport. I would expect, assuming the council would approve this appropriation in April, I have to go out to bid. They will be a bidder. They'll probably be under contract, let's say, by July first. They could probably do Phase One, the study, the historical study during the course of the summer, and then hopefully be ready to start the modeling analysis in September. So thirteen months from then, we are now into the fall of twenty twenty-three before they're going to make any presentation to the Chelsea City Council. So I just want people to be clear, this is going to take some time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the Forbes Public Safety. Is there a plan already shared with the council? Or will there be a plan at some point of what exactly will be implemented to secure safety in that area?
Yeah, so I have a little bit of a breakdown. Alex can probably identify this more, but it's mostly repairing some of the fence work, cutting back some of the vegetation, and boarding up some of the lower-level buildings that would prevent people from climbing easily in. Now, that's not to say people can't make their way into these buildings. They can, but we want to just, it's too easy now. We'll be doing some board up of first-floor areas and cutting vegetation, doing some fence work, some site work. It's broke, there's a breakdown in, again, the letter that I originally sent, but perhaps Alex could add a little bit more.
Yeah, Councilor, that's also in your package. You have that, we have a breakdown from Weston and Sampson, was it?
Correct. And we can share an illustrative plan after this, but as the city manager indicated, we're planning on boarding up all of the windows on the first floor of all three buildings, as well as some areas on the second floor, next to features that can be climbed easily. Like, for instance, there are some open windows next to ladders and pipes that folks could scale up. Um, there's some asbestos and lead abatement involved with this. Since there is lead and asbestos on the site, we have to ensure we comply with OSHA standards. So some level of abatement in the window areas will be necessary. Outside of that, as the city manager indicated, we'll be removing vegetation to ensure there's a clean line of sight from the surveillance cameras, repairing holes and fencing along the railroad tracks, as well as installing some new fencing along the perimeter.
Okay, thank you. I just, I have some, um, community members in that area. And one of the questions I get at times is whether or not there's a city camera that captures any of the activity towards that direction. Do we know if any of our police cameras capture anything or are the cameras that we have around the neighborhood?
Not on the actual site. You know, the closest camera would be on Crescent Ave. Um, the site does have surveillance cameras that are overseen by a private security contractor. Um, they have been intermittently employed by the developer. Um, when we were last there, um, it wasn't clear whether or not the security personnel were still monitoring the site.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilor Lopez.
A question, or maybe that's for Alex. Uh, regarding this monitor we're going to appropriate, and you say you're going to fix the, the windows there, uh, is the city going to get the money back from, uh, from the property owner or whoever's?
Yes, so we have done all the necessary legal work so that once we do the work, we will proceed under a statutory, uh, process that eventually will allow the city to recover its money in the tax-taking process. So eventually, assuming we jump through all of these procedural hoops, we will file an accounting with the land court. And after a certain amount of time goes by and we're not paid by the developer, we will then be allowed to add that money to their tax bill. We'll add two hundred ninety thousand dollars to one of their tax bills. Usually, probably if we did this, if everything worked out right and we got this all done, I think we can add this to the November tax bill, uh, the tax bill that goes out on October first. It might be the January one tax bill that's due on February the first. Uh, and then if they fail to pay us, we will proceed with a tax-taking process. But it will show up on the tax bill eventually.
All right. Eventually, the city will get the money back.
Yes.
Does this end up in some, some type of receivership of the building or something like that?
If we, if the money goes on the tax bill and we don't get paid, we will put them into tax title and seek foreclosure of the property. Now, at some point, the developer will just pay us because the land is probably worth forty million dollars and they're not going to lose it over two hundred and ninety thousand. But eventually, if the developer ignored us, the land court would grant the city the ownership of the property.
And the property would go to the Affordable Housing Trust?
It would be owned by the city. I'm not sure what, you know, then it would be up to the council to decide how to dispose of a forty million dollar asset.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's a good question, but it's not going to happen.
And the council then makes the decision on what to do with the property?
You always have the final vote on disposition of city-owned property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you're interested in buying, we could talk. No, huh? Okay, Mr. Man, any other question before we go on to the next five? I think it's six. Yes, Councilor.
Does the city have any liability for people that are trespassing? Are, are we, are we expected to take some sort of substantial measures to keep people out other than no trespassing signs and, and, and a city camera?
So that would be an interesting question for a jury someday in a court. If someone got hurt and they presented evidence that the city was well-aware of danger on this property, had sent the owner numerous notices, but then never did anything about it. So it gets me a little worried, which is why I want to take these steps.
Right.
But would we?
That's kind of my, that's where I'm going.
Would we really have liability? We would certainly argue we do not have liability. That is our position, that the liability is exclusively on the owner, but I'm not sure I want to test that if someone really gets hurt.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to test it either. Um, so I, I, um, I applaud you for doing that at least. So it shows that we're, we're trying to do something to make the place.
Correct.
Uh, safer.
It's a safeguard for the city, and it's also a win for us because, again, at the end of the day, um, at some point, they're going to argue exactly what the manager stated, that the city did nothing. We're responsible. We're saying that we did everything and we have the work to show it. We have the appropriation and the investment. So, thank you, Councilor. Mr. Manager?
So these next five are all DPW-related, much of it overtime. So the first one is not overtime, this is direct work. This is our, asking the council for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to get started on some additional capital projects that aren't in the FY twenty-three CIP. Some of these kind of came up at the last minute. They, or they were things that we decided to do after the CIP was implemented, or they were relatively small, and we just would like, with this extra money, we decided, well, let's try to get them done. So I include the replacement of the windows here in this chamber, which we would move forward on quickly. There's some, uh, additional work in housing community development space, and there's some work on our firehouses. Those are some of the major things that would be pursued here. So that's item one, that's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There, some of this work, the smaller pieces of it, would be done by our own crews on Saturday and Sunday hours. So that's the second one, building and grounds overtime. We're asking for another thirty-five thousand. Again, that puts us in line with what we actually have spent for the last few years. I'm asking for forty thousand dollars for DPW street and sidewalk work, relatively small money, but there is some stuff we'd like to get done this spring. We have a lot of money in the CIP for street and sidewalk work, but none of that can get started until after July first. There's some minor stuff we'd like to do. A lot of it is line painting, things of that nature that you do at night. We'd like to get a jump on that and not wait till July to start, and that's a forty thousand dollar request. Then the next one is a big item, it's overtime, hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This account has just been underfunded, and I have to take some responsibility for it. But we're always trying, you know, particularly during COVID, we were trying to keep our expenses down. But I demand a lot of DPW, a lot, almost every week I'm saying, do this, put guys on Saturday and Sunday to do that. We do a lot of work on after-hours and on weekends. We are in deficit in this account, and this is the amount that would be necessary both to pay the deficit and to continue the current level of service that we're delivering to our residents on a weekly basis, including work after-hours and on Saturdays and Sundays. That's a hundred and sixty thousand. And the last one is water and sewer overtime work. This is additional money, about thirty-five thousand each in water and sewer, to deal with the typical springtime things that occur in an old antiquated water and sewer system. You know, you, when they were through this, this cycle where it gets cold at night, then it's warmer during the day, then it's cold again at night, uh, it generates a lot of breaks in places where pipes are old, and certainly pipes in the city are very old. So we're looking at a need for another thirty-five thousand in both of those overtime accounts. And again, that will probably put us in line with, uh, what we've actually spent in the last couple of years. So that's DPW work, and I'll stop there. The last stuff are deficits.
Any questions? I just have one question regarding the deficit, um, for the overtime. Um, can you tell us what that is?
I don't know what the current street and sidewalk overtime deficit is right now, do you? Eighty-six thousand, as of two weeks ago.
Councilor Robinson?
Water Department. I thought we were so well-funded when we took on this endeavor. I didn't ever think that we would be looking for overtime monies. And is that for city workers or is that for outside contract work that needs to be done?
No, this is all for city employees. This is exclusively city employee overtime work. And we're still in line with all of the projections we made before to s, I mean, we're still in that period where we're saving money from our RH White contract. Uh, part of it is that originally, when I presented that plan to you back three years ago, we anticipated having thirteen employees in that department. We still only have eleven. I am going to be recommending the FY twenty-three budget to finally get up to the thirteen we originally projected. But we're still operating this department with two employees less than what we projected when we originally sought to take it over. We were proposing to get up to thirteen. During COVID, we purposely left it a little underfunded and maintained only a contingent of eleven. But as I said, in the FY twenty-three budget, I am proposing to get up to the thirteen that was originally presented to the council back when we requested the takeover of this department.
Okay. Moving on?
Okay, the deficit, so there's four other deficits that are out there. The first is outside legal services. This is a tough account to judge every year, but we are about twenty, we anticipate that by the end of the year, we'll need about twenty-five thousand. I will say there is one significant public safety disciplinary case that's eating up a fair amount of outside legal services. It's a case currently at civil service. We've had one full day of hearing. There's probably two full civil service hearing days left before that case is ended, and that's going to eat up some money. And so we think twenty-five thousand dollars is, uh, appropriate. We also did spend a little bit of money on that outside council for the EverSource matter that I wrote you about on Friday. Unemployment is, uh, we anticipate the deficit there is forty-nine thousand. We do not have any layoffs, but we did terminate some employees over the course of the year. And, you know, the unemployment system is very liberal, and so typically, if we terminate someone even for cause, they're going to end up getting unemployment compensation. And so we think we're going to need about forty-nine thousand dollars in that account to cover our deficit as of June thirtieth. The parking department needs a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the parking vendor. And the reason why this changed so much from what was budgeted is because at the time, we were budgeting this back in the spring of twenty twenty-one, we were in a regional contract with MAPC for these services. MAPC got out of the business at, in the late spring, and every municipality then had to rebid on their own. And the rebid for the city of Chelsea, the low bid came in a hundred and twelve thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted had we remained in that regional effort. There were a lot of reasons why MAPC pulled out of this contract, and I don't know all the details. All I know is that at the end of the day, they weren't prepared to go forward, and all the municipalities were stuck pursuing independent efforts. Solid waste disposal is up a hundred thousand dollars. This was something we saw in fiscal year twenty-two, uh, but, I'm sorry, this is something we saw in fiscal year twenty-one during COVID. And when we were preparing the budget for fiscal year twenty- And when we were preparing the budget for fiscal year twenty-two, we thought, this is a COVID aberration because there was so much trash was being collected. We thought it would sort of go back to normal in FY twenty-two. So, we budgeted our normal, what we anticipated. It turned out that that high level of trash disposal did never really came down all that much. And so, we're still collecting more trash than we used to pre-COVID. And so, the deficit's about a hundred thousand dollars. We will remedy this in the FY twenty-three budget presentation. I will propose sufficient funds to cover the current level of trash disposal. I'm sorry, trash, uh, removal, the picking up of trash. Disposal is RESCO. This is, uh, this is, I'm sorry, this is RESCO. This is disposing at RESCO, the cost of disposing our trash.
It says disposal cost.
Yes, it's disposal cost. It's the cost of disposing. We pay on a per-ton basis at RESCO. So, it, it's purely a matter of how much tonnage you dump at RESCO. We have a long-term contract with RESCO, and it has a, uh, annual price that escalates each year, but it's a per-ton cost. And so, because we're picking up more trash, we are disposing more at RESCO. I'm sorry for the confusion.
I got a question, um, regarding the parking depart-, um, parking department contract service. So, this year, you said it was a hundred and twelve thousand more?
Yes, more than what we budgeted.
Right, so, wh- I mean, what's the anticipation for year two thousand twenty-three?
Up, still up. I've, it's, I've can, I have that number, and it's going to be an increase over this year, yes. Because we're, we're going out to bid again, and we're anticipating an increase, uh, this year.
That's a significant increase, though.
This is the, you know, there aren't a whole lot of bidders out there for this work that Chelsea does.
Okay, anyone has a question? Okay, Counselor DeJesus, northeast?
For the trash, uh, pickup disposal, when you say increased, it's not the, um, the number of times we pick up trash, right?
No, so we have a separate contract with a vendor for trash removal.
Okay.
And that's a set contract price. It doesn't change. They come once a week to each, you know, once a week to your part of the city. They take your barrels, whatever's there, they pick up. Uh, we still supposed to pick up whatever's there. So, that doesn't change. That's a pure contract price. Uh, it has a recycling component. It's a contract with the trash removal vendor. And we have a company that does that. It's under contract. They are only under contract for one more year. So, that is a, that is a contract we may have to go out to bid for next year. But we have them under contract for this year, and they're under contract for FY twenty-three. That's a set price. We know what that is. It never changes, notwithstanding how much trash they pick up. However, if they pick up a lot more trash and they go to RESCO to dispose of it, RESCO simply charges a price per ton. So, that number is just, it's a flat per-ton number. Whatever the tonnage you dispose of there, you get a bill from RESCO. And the amount we have been disposing there is higher than it used to be pre-COVID. We did see this in fiscal year twenty-one, but we didn't budget for that increase in FY twenty-two because we, we thought we would come back to sort of a normal level of trash in the city, but we never did. It stayed at that sort of post-COVID high level. And so, we're short of money this year. For next year, the trash disposal number will be up, and you will see that in your FY twenty-three budget. So, I'm hopeful that next spring, I'm not coming back to you looking for trash disposal money. I'm hoping that I've put enough in the FY twenty-three budget, but we did not put enough in the FY twenty-two budget.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lopez?
Question is, I know they mixing, or they throw in the recycle, the same kind of truck for the trash. It maybe that's what, because it went up, because that they just also the same?
So, they are not supposed to mix recycling with trash.
Because I see that the truck that's picking up the trash is the same, the recycle, I mean, is the same truck that's picking up the trash. Maybe that's what went up? I don't know.
So, that is not the reason why it's up. I, maybe we'll have Wu come up and explain the situation with the vendor, but that vendor is not supposed to be mixing recycling for, with trash. You are not supposed to be sending recycling to RESCO. And they can reject loads if it has recyclable material in it.
I know before, they had a specific truck for recycle. Now, I see the same truck, same kind of truck where they pick up trash, that's what they dispose the, the recycle.
All right, I'm going to let Wu respond to that one briefly.
So, I think the, uh, the style of truck, um, they may, they may look the same, but they're supposed to be sending different trucks for different applications, one for trash, one for recyclables. There is some feedback that we're getting that folks are putting things that could be recycled into the waste stream of, of regular trash. And so, the volume could, could be going up, uh, you know, as it relates to that. So, I think part of that really could be more public outreach to keep making sure that people are, are putting things that can be recycled into the recyclable waste stream and keeping it out of the typical trash waste stream. I, I think that's the, that's the best answer that I could offer based upon what, what I've been told.
Also, I have another question regarding that, uh, you know, we, we pay a contract to them, right? To pick up trash in Chelsea. But if they forgot my house, for example, because they're doing construction, they don't come and pick it up. Twelve o'clock, they're done, they're gone. You call, nobody answer. So, that tries to stay there to the next day. If we pay a contract to pick up trash, how, you know, how come they don't come back and, and pick it up?
So, there, there are requirements in the contract that they go back and picked up missed spots, but I'll have to let Wu decide how it works in practice when someone calls a DPW and says they missed my spot.
So, I believe the previous vendor, there were a lot more problems with that. Um, I believe the current vendor we've worked with, and my assessment is that they're doing a better job, certainly a significantly better job than the previous vendor. That's not to say that we don't have instances where this still occurs. I believe that those instances are far less. When those issues are brought to our attention, we do reach back to the contractor and, and require them to do that, uh, you know, to, to come back around and do that. I would say it's probably a fifty-fifty success rate, and a lot of that is a function of what time of the day it is. We have sort of a built-in backup plan, and that's our public outreach coordinator who also handles, uh, um, he's basically our solid waste coordinator as well, who just jumps in the truck and, and swings by a house and picks things up randomly, um, or as requested. I don't think we have a perfect system, but I think our, our system continues to get better. Um, we could certainly, we could certainly work on that a little bit more. Three-one-one is another opportunity, uh, for folks to kind of identify that because, you know, three-one-one input gets response faster than necessarily. So, if you're calling DPW, like, if you call, you know, um, hopefully, you're going to, you'll, you'll, you'll get an answer and you'll get somebody to, to go right away. Connecting to three-one-one creates a work ticket, and that's an email system that goes, that actually, the response is actually faster. So, I think we've got two things at play here. One is the response time, and one is the responsiveness of the contractor. We can work on both of those.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Uh, Tom, when, when did you say this, this contract, what this company is up?
We, we just gave them a one-year extension, uh, until, uh, the end of June of twenty-twenty-three. And I did that because we were looking, at, at one point, the council passed an order to ask us to consider bringing this in-house, which I'm not inclined to do, but the council asked me to look at that. And I did look at it twice. Uh, there were two different council orders. We looked at it once. The numbers didn't make sense. The second time we looked at it, because these, these trash numbers are going up pretty dramatically, uh, the numbers were closer. I still, my own inclination is this is not a business I want to get into, but I agreed to look at it a third time, next, you know, at the end of this year. And so, I only wanted to agree with Boston Carding to do another one-year contract. If I conclude at the end of this year that we're not going to bring this in-house, we are indeed going to go out to bid, we'll put together a proposal in the winter for a five-year trash contract. This vendor likes being in Chelsea. Their numbers are reasonably, uh, uh, competitive. My guess is they would give us the best competitive bid for a five-year contract. Their, their one-year extension was very favorable, so that was an easy choice to make. They only went up about thirty thousand dollars or so on their price. Uh, so, it was a, it was a pretty modest, like, three percent increase in costs.
But when, but when it ends, you're going to anticipate an increase in what they're going to be asking for the city?
You know, I don't know what we'll get from them in the winter. You know, this would be a bid we would likely put out in January, February of next year for a five-year contract. We'll get all the major players. We'll bid BFI, uh, Capital Waste, uh, their, uh, non-union company, whatever that's called. And, uh, we'll, you know, we'll, Waste Management will bid. So, there's, there's a handful of bidders in this world, but this company, uh, my guess is will likely give us the best bid. Will it be more than we're paying in FY twenty-three? Probably. But we'll just have to see what the numbers come in at.
Well, I would, I would bank on it, and I'd also put a little buffer in there for what the tonnage is going to possibly change, um, next year, what the increase for us that we're picking up more trash. So, that means it's going to be an increase in what tonnage that we send to RESCO.
Fair enough.
Okay, um, Counselor DeJesus?
Um, you know, this is really concerning for me just because I connected directly to, you know, the concerns that our community have with rodents and the spread of, you know, the, the hiking, um, issues with rodents. And so, I, I'd love to explore how for the next, uh, budget, we could potentially increase either the number of times the trash is picked up or, um, as, um, was mentioned earlier, evaluate what areas in the city have the, the high amounts or increasing amounts of trash or potentially what areas are not doing the recycling so that we can initiate some type of educational plan for our community. Um, that, those are just my thoughts and connecting.
So, I just caution that, you know, and I'm not making a policy statement here, I'm just, the disposal of recycling at the moment is actually more than what we pay to dispose of trash. You used to make money on recycling. Now, it costs more to dispose of it than it does to dispose of regular trash. I don't know what it is these days, but at one point, it was in the nineties.
Five, six years.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
It's bad.
So, it's costing us more to?
Yes, we pay, we pay separately for the contractor to dispose of recycling.
Okay, okay.
It's not, doesn't go to RESCO. It goes to a different location. At one point, you know, a decade ago, municipalities made money on recycling. That's why there was a big push to get residents to recycle because every ton of recycling you collected, you made money on it. Today, uh, re- to dispose of recycle, you, you have to pay to dispose of it, and it's typically a higher rate than it is at RESCO. So, I don't have the RESCO contract in front of me, but my memory is we're probably paying around eighty dollars a ton, maybe a little less, to dispose of our regular trash. And recycling disposal at one point about a year and a half ago was a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. It's come down a bit, but I still think it exceeds what it costs at RESCO, although I don't have current numbers in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Lo-, Counselor Lopez?
Can you explain me then, so we pay the contractor to pick up the trash. So, where, where do they take the trash? We pay them to?
We pay the, so we pay the contractor for the trucks, for the manpower to pick up the, to, uh, remove the trash from our streets, put it in their truck. Put the barrel back. That's one contract. Then they drive that trash to RESCO in Saugus. And we pay RESCO to-
That's another, another bill?
To dispose of the trash by a ton, per ton.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, um, no further questions? See everyone at, I'm sorry, Counselor Lo-, Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, they u- they usually just have one shaker, um, emptying the barrels besides, besides the driver?
I don't know what his manpower is like at Boston Carding.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's basically a staff of two on each truck, a, a driver and a, and an assistant.
And what effect does that have on them being able to pick up the city rubbish?
So, this, this company, this, Boston Carding is the company that took over, so we were under contract to a company called Russell Disposal. Uh, this company that acquired Russell is actually a union contract company. Uh, they've actually, I feel have been quite good. I'm not saying they're perfect, but I will say that the level of complaints that have come into my office from Boston Carding is significantly less than it was with Russell Disposal. So, anecdotally, I can tell you, they seem to be doing a better job than our previous vendor without saying they're doing a perfect job. You get compl- I've had probably six different trash vendors as mayor and city manager now. None of them are perfect. They all have their issues.
My, my, my other question is, who inspects the trucks in the morning when they do come into Chelsea?
To make sure they're empty.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Usually, they pull in, my, they typically pull into the city yard and someone is taking a look to ensure that they're empty, but I'll have to have Wu answer that specifically.
I'm not going to lie. I personally don't do it. Um, I know that they show up and stop at the city yard as part of their normal operation. I believe that's usually the first stop. They also empty the dumpsters at our, at our facility. So, I know eyes from DPW are put on those. I'm not going to say that we do it every single day or that I've monitored it every single day. We can certainly, you know, put more of a focus on that.
I mean, physically, somebody should be ac- asking them to open up the back of their vehicle so that, to make sure there's nothing on those trucks when they come into the city.
I agree. Understood.
That clearly is the contract requirement, that they show up with empty trucks.
Yeah, and I'm just talking off.
Understood.
Okay.
No, I'm just joking. Counselor Taylor?
I just have one quick question.
Take two.
Do we?
Quick one.
Do we have, um, um, can we anticipate a, a better rate on a five-year contract than we got on a one-year contract?
Um, this one-year contract, as I said, was pretty competitive. Uh, it was a very small increase over last year. So, I, I just don't know. I'm hoping that this company, I know they're very interested in the city's work. They said they would aggressively bid if we put out a five-year contract, so I expect they will do that. I'll have pricing in, you know, by March or so.
Thank you.
Counselor Abid, do you need a?
Again, the timing, uh, this contract ends when, and you might get an extension?
June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. So, it ends, it actually, the, the current contract we're under ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. We executed a one-year extension, so we have them under contract till June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. I will make a decision as to whether we're going to move this stuff in-house or we're going to go out for a five-year bid by the end of this calendar year. I would strongly expect I'm going to make a decision to go out. We'll put a bid together in the winter, put it out on the streets, say, late February, so that we can have plenty of time to get a vendor under contract for July one, twenty-twenty-three for a five-year contract.
And because we're locked in now, we didn't have to, we're not concerned or you're not concerned with any surcharges because of fuel, because of the increase?
No, we have a con- No, we have a contract. We executed a contract for FY twenty-three. That's a set contract.
Okay. Are there any contracts right now that we, we, we experience a surcharge because of fuel costs?
I'm not aware of any. I'll turn to the DPW. I will say that we have increased our gasoline line for FY twenty-three in every line item, police, fire, DPW, by about twenty percent for next year over where we are now.
Not any of our competitively bid contracts, but our one-year purchase order contracts for several vendors that we know that we just do regular business with, they have been sending us notices saying, you know, there's now an additional charge, things like we get concrete from Boston Sand and Gravel. The next time we order from them, when we start work in the spring, we already know that we'll be paying a little bit more. But that type of contract just goes for one year at a time, and, and so, we're not locked in to, to pricing for three years.
I think you still have, there's still a couple of items for the school department that are left here that I just wanted to mention for Webster Ave. So, I had sent a separate letter.
Is that the revised?
It's, it's on your order, list of orders that Fatima sent. Yes, it's in the back of the revised order.
Yeah.
And so, just, these are, the school department is looking to renovate seventy-seven Webster Ave, which they have under a long-term contract. The renovation costs are extensive. They have the money available in old-school CIP accounts that are not, no longer necessary. Either they were closed out and have a surplus, or they never ended up spending any of the money because they had another source of funding. So, there are four transfers. They're all close out an old CIP school account, transfer it to this project to complete the rehabilitation of seventy-seven Webster Ave. Those, there are four orders because there's four separate old CIP projects that will close out and transfer to this new line item for seventy-seven Webster. And those are the last four items on your revised notice.
So, so is that the roof work or?
No, that's not, this is interior rehabilitation of seventy-seven Webster Ave. There is another letter coming to you from Monday night for another school department project proposing the same exact thing, to do work on the Chelsea High School roof.
Okay.
Closing out four old CIP projects, freeing up money to do that. That work, that, that letter, I think, is before, will be before you for Monday, April eleventh. I don't think I sent it down because I'm still waiting for the, I'm still waiting for the exact orders from the auditor.
Okay. All right. Questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
Again, counsel members, a, a lot of what was said, the city manager gave us a package on March fifteenth. We, if you still have that package, it's to give you an in-depth condensed version of what was being said. That's how I kept up with my notes, so you can look at that. But pretty much, I want to thank you for your transparency and also making us perform in it. And thank you, Counsel, for the question. No other.
Good job.